KLTV Soundcheck, KLTV Soundcheck.
Really cool.
Thank you.
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 Welcome to the regular public meeting of the Cowalitz County Board. It is the 18th of July, pretty close to 9:00 AM. Would you, if you're able to stand, stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you.
At this point, let's just get the minutes out of the way.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the minutes. They seem to be in order. I move their adoption for last week's meetings.
Any, any comments? From anybody? Remember, the public does not need to identify themselves at all. And if you are online, just raise your hand, and hopefully I'll get to see that. See none? I call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also would aye. The minutes pass. At this point in time, I'd like to take a moment for a PSA, a personal, a, a public service announcement by our auditor who I think should be-
Just came on.
Ah, there we are. Good morning, Carolyn. This is Carolyn Fundiesland, the best auditor in the nation, not just the state.
Good morning. I appreciate, again, an opportunity to share some elections information with you, get a little free advertising. So this is a really great opportunity in the mornings to share information. So, Elections is hosting their annual open house next week, and we have two dates. The 25th, Tuesday, July 25th, is reserved for the public. So anybody that has any questions about the process, our security measures, please, please attend. Call us. You can just walk in, but space is limited, and we like to keep group sizes for the tours kind of even. So appointments are encouraged, but not required. But we'd love to have you. I, I appreciate the time.
And I'd like to add, and I think my, that my colleague would also agree, all elections are important. While this is kind of what we'd call an off-year election, there are some big issues that are on the ballot.
Absolutely.
Yep.
These, these local positions that you're voting on this year, they don't get a lot of publicity, but they have the most impact on your daily lives. These are our local taxes. on your daily lives. These are our local taxes, school bonds that affect your property tax values, fire district levies, school board members, the decisions that they're making regarding your children in schools. They have the most direct impact on your daily lives.
And to make a great impact over the nation, imagine if we had an eighty-five percent turnout for an off-year election, we'd be on the front page of the New York Times. So don't forget that.
So I was recently quoted in the paper. I will let you know that I am trying to get out of the business of making turnout predictions because I have been so wrong recently. So my prediction was I will provide you the average turnout of the last four odd-year primaries. And it was like twenty-one percent bad, really bad. And we're starting off slow, I'll say.
Oh. I, I just turned my ballot in this morning.
That'll make all the difference.
You lead by example, right?
Yes. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Mr. Weber.
Well, good morning. We have our consent agenda to review at this point. Our first item is an inter-agency agreement with the State of Washington's Office of Financial Management to agreeing to acquire land that may be necessary should the Army Corps of Engineers decide to dredge the Calhoun. This is an agreement that we've been renewing off and on since nineteen eighty-five, when Congress set flood protection in the Calhoun Valley as, as a national priority. The state will give us the money to acquire the land. They just recognize that we have the best connection with the local landowners. And there have been a number who have approached me in the last several years saying, well, we did it before and we still have land that's available. So let us know if you get to that point. This just keeps current, the appropriations at the state to acquire property and authorizes us to go ahead and act on their behalf. The second agreement is with advanced electrical technologies. And this is for electrical services at the headquarters landfill. That operation is undergoing important communication upgrades so that it's, as the landfill grows, they have to have the capacity to continue to communicate from headquarters, from the office up there at headquarters to the various positions at the landfill, as well as upgrading computer services. We've workshop that with staff up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars. They don't really expect to need that much. But we've also learned that there are delays that drive costs up sometimes. The next two agreements refer to arrangements for providing oversight for opioid abatement. Calhoun County, as well as most cities and counties in the state, are receiving awards, court awards, based on two major lawsuits filed against the manufacturers of opioids who promised everybody twenty years ago that the opioids that they were manufacturing are not addictive. And of course, we know how that ended up being so wrong. So we're going to be getting in money over the next seventeen years in varying amounts and it'll be up to us to design the programs to, to kind of abate the, the costs that those addictions caused. But there is this agency that has oversight to make sure that we're, we can, we are doing it the right way. There's a whole list of different strategies that we have to follow. And we'll be getting recommendations, I believe, from our Department of Social and Health Services outlining that. It's, it's two different agreements because the court sorted the, a, a, a regional approach. And within that regional approach, there's going to be a local committee that'll take care of overseeing what goes on in, in Calhoun County in collaboration with the, in collaboration with Pacific County and Graves Harbor County and City of Longview and Kelso are all involved in the subgroup. We have a series of letters and notices, including a retirement letter for Deputy Brad Baumann, who's retiring. And that's really hard for me personally. He was a student of mine when he was in high school. They're starting to retire on me now. We also have a letter reappointing Erica Rodman, or appointing Erica Rodman to the Building and Planning Advisory Committee. She's a Realtor. Also serves on the planning commission. That'll be, that'll provide some good synergies between those two groups. We also have a letter to Woody Dudley, appointing him to the Veterans Advisory Board. Elizabeth Daly, appointing her to the Parks and Recreation Board. And we've received a letter from the Calhoun County Boundary Review Board regarding an annexation that nobody challenged out on Ocean Beach Highway, a single lot, about forty-five-hundred block that connects with the city limits of Longview and goes to Ocean Beach Highway. And that will be, since nobody challenged it, that'll be approved. And then we have claims and vouchers totaling a little over one or two-point-four-four million dollars, including several payroll items. And that concludes the consent agenda.
So at this point, let, let me just say one thing. The letter to Charles Woodrow Dudley, AKA Woody, is approved here if we approve the consent agenda. And that's, I think, is all good. But what he doesn't know is that his first meeting is this afternoon. So in case you know where he is, make sure he shows up. So if, are there any further comments or statements from anybody? Not seen any.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve today's consent agenda as, as presented.
Again, last opportunity for comments. Seen none. I call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. The motion does pass. Thank you. We now go on to the motion items. The first motion item is from our HHS department. And Gina James. Good morning.
Hey, good morning, Gina James, Health and Human Services. This contract is a little bit different than our normal contracts. It's with the Washington State Department of Social and Health Services. This is what is called the general terms and conditions contract. So this is the sort of the boilerplate standard contract language that comes to us from the state. This contract doesn't have any money or scope of works connected to it. It's just that boilerplate language. There are various program agreements that the county sometimes engages with that would apply, that would be connected to these general terms and conditions. So, for example, HHS typically works with the Developmental Disabilities Administration for our Adult Employment and Day Program Services. That contract, that program agreement would be connected to these general terms and conditions. There are also a couple other county departments that contract with DSHS. Juvenile Department, I believe the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. So they have different program agreements that would also be connected to these general terms and conditions. It's a six-year agreement. I believe the last agreement was five years. So they do in these kind of chunks of a period of time, these longer periods of times. It includes the standard language it includes is around confidentiality, dispute resolution, maintenance of records, subcontracting, and termination clauses. So that's kind of a brief overview. I'm not sure if you have any questions.
Well, I have to confess, I was a little surprised that Prosecutor's Office and Juvenile Detention were connected with Health and Human Services. You don't normally provide services for those.
No.
But this is to, to allow the sharing of confidential records and, you know, maintaining those special features that are unique to.
We just sort of took the lead with getting it through Agenda Quick and getting it on the agenda today. But it, it does apply to any of those other agreements that other, you know, the contract is with Calhoun County as a whole, so.
So this doesn't specifically bind the county to any one contract that says if we take contract here, we can trace back the, the, the rules by which we have to behave.
Correct.
Over to this contract.
Right. So you may see a program agreement coming to you in the future. That program agreement would say, you know, this is the program, this is the money to do the program, and we reference these general terms and conditions.
And at that time, if the public or we think that's, those are conditions unacceptable, we just not accept the money.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from anybody? There's a gentleman at the podium. Please proceed.
I just want to clarify that this contract does not obligate you to any other contracts. But future contracts may link back to this one.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve Contract twenty-three oh-two-two with Washington State Department of Social and Health Services as presented this morning.
Last opportunity for, for comments on the motion to approve Contract twenty-three dash zero-two-two. I see no hands. I see no one coming up. I call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also would aye. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Public works. Okay, I guess. Let me look. Susan, are you online?
There she goes. Susan, you're muted.
Good morning. Sorry, I was being transferred over. So what we have in front of you today is the bid award for the Abernathy Creek Road Bridge Number Two paintwork. For those of you not familiar, where Abernathy Creek Bridge Number Two is, it's at milepost four-point-three-three to four-point-three-six. This bridge is a concrete deck with steel girders underneath. We will be painting the underside of this bridge. We had two, four, six, seven bidders. The low bidder was America Group LLC out, excuse me, America Group LLC out of Longview. They are underneath the engineer's estimate. They completed all of their paperwork and we're recommending award to this bidder. This is a project funded by Wash Dot STPG Bridge Funding at a hundred percent reimbursable.
Any questions from the audience? Any comments? I'll take the opportunity to.
Good morning. I like the concept of always going with the lowest bid. I'm a little concerned that we get quality at the same time. Is there a track record that this person has that says they know how to paint the underside of a bridge and if it's under what the engineers estimated the cost would be? I'm a little concerned that we'll end up with a shoddy job or having to fix something later on.
Well, I, I know that the state law requires us to take the lowest responsible bid. So companies have to perform at a certain minimum level. And certainly if they've reneged and haven't been able to finish a contract or, and have problems, then they, they lose that responsibility label. However, if you're a brand new company, you don't have any reason not to assume you can do quality work. We have to trust on supervision from our staff to make sure that they're following the rules and.
There you go. Okay.
Yeah. So, so we make that effort to.
So it'll be watched close enough to, okay. Thank you.
Susan, a question for you. Is there any traffic impact?
There may be some minimal impacts when they're setting up because this is all under the bridge. So the tra, the traveling public will see minimal impacts, maybe some shoulder closures.
Okay, and do you have any idea what the cost split is between material and labor?
I do not.
My guess is the paints, paint is not cheap.
No.
Okay, and just to confirm that Wash Dot is paying a hundred percent?
Wash Dot is paying a hundred percent.
And just for our.
Because it's their money, they had to agree on the award. So we have to go through that extra step on this process, project.
And for our own notification, when, when will this work be completed?
So today is the award. They have two weeks to get the contract back. Then once the board signs the contract, they have, I don't know if this one's written for ten or twenty-one days to start. So we're looking late August, beginning of September for.
Okay, and we, after the bridge is completed, we will pay the contractor and then Wash Dot will reimburse us?
Correct.
And typically the delays in there are, are with Wash Dot's not too bad. Am I correct?
That is correct. Wash Dot generally reimburses us within a couple of weeks of us sending our request in. So we bill, we bill Wash Dot monthly. So we'll bill them for the month of July in August and we generally get that money by the end of August.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Comments? I see none.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid of one hundred forty-seven thousand four hundred forty-four dollars to America Group LLC for Abernathy Creek Bridge to painting as presented.
Last call for comments. I'll call for the road. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also say aye. Motion does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner's Office.
We have a resolution on the agenda in the motion items for changing the office access to the administrative building to four days a week, Monday through Friday. This was in coordination with the auditor, the assessor, and the treasurer, and I believe they are online to talk a little more about it.
You, you said four days a week, Monday through Friday. You mean Monday through Thursday?
Monday through Thursday. Sorry about that.
Two plus two is five. So which of, Carolyn, do you want to speak to this one?
Happy to. So this is, if anybody attended the workshops, this is a trial period that the commissioners are agreeing to. And I'll just say that in the auditor's office, our foot traffic has changed dramatically since COVID. A lot of the departments in this building are already operating on a four-day work week. And we, other departments are currently getting complaints because citizens come in prior to their work hours only to find that we're closed. I'm not sure that there's a perfect answer here, but I do like the idea of this trial closing on Fridays and extending our hours on Monday through Thursday and providing consistent hours specifically between auditor, assessor, and treasurer. So as, according to this resolution, as of August first, we would all open at seven AM together. So building and planning is a little bit different because they belong to a different union and we can't, you know, they work different hours according to their union contract. So we, it's difficult to match consistently, but we're doing our best. consistently, but we're doing our best to provide consistent services to the public. So I'm happy to answer, uh, any questions.
So Carolyn, you did mention though, there is an, an exception for those hours during election season during uh, in which we need to be open to collect ballots and, um, I want you to review that just a little bit. That's not going to be every week, but, uh.
Yeah, so I'm not willing to cut services to the public. Um, I see this as a little bit of a hybrid in the auditor's office and I think the treasurer's office is doing something similar as well. Um, we simply are having trouble hiring people, this the ability to, uh, rotate shifts and provide a four-day work week option when we're hiring is very attractive these days. It will provide us that option, but at the same time, my office and also the treasurer's office, I'm still going to be providing recording services on Friday. That can be done by e-recording now, it doesn't need to be an in-person transaction any longer. So we can keep the building doors shut, we can minimally staff on Fridays. Elections will, I'm not required by statute actually to be open on Fridays, but I think that best serves the public, uh, to be open Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to five every election period and also candidate filing week. And I believe the treasurer's office thinks that it best serves the public to be open during tax filing season as well.
That is correct, yes.
So we're trying to work through this kind of hybrid system and test it out with the public to see if this better serves their needs.
Beyond this, uh, agreement, we, uh, let me ask it like this, you have agreement from, uh, from the unions?
So this isn't what we are doing, the, this isn't a permanent change, this is a trial period. So we are entering into individual contracts with each employee saying, okay, this is what the work week is going to look like now, if it doesn't work, we can reject it at any time. If it ever advances to the point of being negotiated with the unions and part of the union contract, then we don't have any more options. So right now, we have already drafted our, what we call MOUs with each individual employee and they are ready to sign so that if it doesn't work, uh, our bases are covered and we can withdraw the agreements and go back to a five-day work week.
Okay, and then in addition to some changes, uh, we will have to change some of the county code?
I'm, I'm not legal, so I'm not sure about that, I, I'm not sure.
Uh, let me just leave it, it's a little more complicated, uh, this is this period completely, but we've got some details that we have to work out. So you will get to see some of this in the future, I believe. But for the moment, the, 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 the key issue is extended hours during the first four days of the week. And while initially I was not in favor of that because I don't want the public to think we're trying to shortchange them and not supply them uh, the s- s- services they need to comply with our laws. Uh, I think it probably doesn't work out like that, we've given some thought to how many people show up on Friday and uh, we, we know that if we're open eight to five kind of thing, well, that's the normal working hours for a lot of the public and, uh, if we're open early and close, if we open before eight and close after and stay open until after five, that gives the public enhanced opportunity, so that's the idea behind it and, uh, as Carolyn has said, it is a trial. And I think it'll probably work out just fine.
I think Ra- Rachel, you hear from the treasurer's office?
I am, yes.
Great, okay. And, and you're, you're in support of the proposal?
Ye- yes, we are.
Okay.
And, uh, the assessor's office has been meeting with us as well, currently the building, I should say, not the building. The office hours of each department differ slightly and we are working together. The au- the assessor, auditor and treasurer are really intertwined and we are working together to set consistent building hours. So, uh, currently the assessor's office is seven thirty to five. They're going to change their operating hours to match ours so that we all open at seven.
And you close that?
Everybody's going to close at five with the exception of licensing and recording. They have to have a half an hour to reconcile their tills and process the bank deposits. Otherwise the county would incur overtime costs.
And just for, uh, completeness, I suppose, whatever that means, uh, the RCW says this board is authorized and responsible for setting hours across the entire, uh, c- county operations, including the electeds. That'll play into some discussion we'll see in the future, I, I, I really don't know how that will materialize.
Doug just joined us.
A big pardon?
Doug just joined us.
There, Doug, did you want to say something?
That is in fact a fact, um, and there have been some interesting interactions between electeds and boards in other counties. Invariably, the parties, um, try to work together to make the best operations for the public, which is what you're doing here. Uh, the second comment is with regard to your changes in county code. Um, when I drafted the policy two-point-seven a few years ago, we drafted it. I built in some flexibility, um, that was COVID-related, but it now spills over. So I don't foresee any changes two-point-seven for the electeds to be able to operate in this matter. And I build a sunset provision into the resolution you have, so will automatically lapse after one year, um, if you do not extend it. So you should be good to go, if that's your preference.
Excellent, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
And the w- 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 wisdom included, and the wisdom included in, uh, in the county code. So, uh, Dennis, in this resolution, I made the, the, this, this grammar Nazi couldn't help himself and I'm going to make a change in the word orientation but has nothing to do with changing the, the meaning, so when we approve this, it's going to be a and, and I passed it through Doug and he laughed at me, but he said it's okay.
Okay.
So we have a gentleman at the podium.
I guess, uh, I wanted to clarify a little bit better the definition of season. Election season from the time the ballots go out until when and tax season goes from when to when, I mean, it got a ru- we have a rough idea what that is, I assume.
So I'll answer for elections and, uh, it's very specific for elections, uh. The election period is the eighteen-day voting period every election, so once ballots are mailed, we're open. And we're, we've already mailed ballots, obviously, we're in the middle of the primaries, so even though this resolution states, I believe it goes into effect August first, that's primary day for me, I'm, I'm, we're open eight-thirty to five.
For how many days after the election, after the, after bo- after, uh, voting closes?
So after voting closes, the election period is closed, we would go back to the four-day, uh, operating work week other than certification, if, if that falls on a Friday and randomly it does, uh, we would be open to the public.
Okay. And tax season would be?
Typically, the property taxes are, uh, due every April thirtieth and October thirty-first, those are the due dates and the week preceding the due dates are, are busiest, um, and so I would foresee that our office would be open that week as a five-day work week.
Okay, that answers my question.
Thank you, uh, Carolyn, before you go, this is also an opportunity to complete, uh, something I forgot to ask you about, which is uh, the uh, your, your stated preference of mailing versus y- the use of the ballot boxes, would you would you care to comment on that?
So, not to, uh, diminish other public servants, but you will notice in all election materials, I try to stress the importance of re- utilizing a ballot drop box. It's more secure, it's more efficient, um. Me personally, uh, I know that I'm using online banking or some sort of secure transmission. I'm not going to send my mortgage payment through the mail and I would ask citizens to consider the same, um, we offer multiple ballot boxes in every city in the county, they're readily accessible, they're checked every day and emptied only by election officials. Um, save costs and limit your risk by utilizing a ballot drop box.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution temporarily adjusting the days and hours of public access to the Calitz County Administration Building as presented, with one word exception that you may note.
I'd like to comment on this issue before you vote on it. I'm looking at the first paragraph of this resolution, which hasn't been numbered yet. And I'm reading flexibility for the public, increased morale and pro- productivity. Does that mean the public or the employees of Calitz County?
We, I, I believe it is for both, for the, for the public employees. They'll, they'll end up speaking eventually on that, but I think they do tend to like a four-day day work week, for the public, that's why we have a trial period, they will tell us how this is working out and the employees will tell us how this is w- working out, we're coming in with the belief that it is a positive or we wouldn't be entertaining doing it, the proof will be in, in the future.
Well, as you know, Longview's been on a four-day work week for quite some time now. Except for EMS services. And if you're short on paying your bills and you don't realize they're on a four-day week, guess what happens? You, you get docked. Now it says here after morale and productivity, cost savings, how's it going to save us any money?
Well, there are a variety of, uh, ways, uh, let me, let me move this to to, to Carolyn, a strong proponent of the, of the motion and she will try and address that, I think.
Yeah, as I said before, I don't think that there is a perfect answer. But our foot traffic has changed, I was never a proponent of this idea in the past. But the public is being trained, you used an example of City of Longview, City of Kelso's also uh, either on the four-day work week already or, or moving towards it. The public is already being trained, so our traffic is so light that it's made me a believer, uh. I believe the public will be better served because I am currently receiving complaints from people that work just like us and they can't get into the office during those work periods. So they come in early and then they have to ping pong between offices just to find, I'm closed and I don't open until eight-thirty, so I'm receiving those complaints currently. We're trying to do the best that we can, again, this is a trial period just to see does it best serve the public? And we will also not have security costs on Friday. We won't have security in the building and I believe the heating and cooling, all of that'll be off on Fridays.
Are the county employees going to be docked for that Friday? That would be an empirical cost saving in my mind.
So county employees will still, they're by contract, work thirty-seven point five hours for this office, whether that is from seven AM till five PM, uh, Monday through Thursday or whether that is eight-thirty to five Monday through Friday, they're going to work the same number of hours at the same pay rate, the hours of operation are the only change.
There'll be no cost savings as it pertains to, uh, salary.
Neutral.
What do you mean by neutral?
No difference, there is no difference.
So there is no cost savings?
When it comes to salary.
Well, there, 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 yes, and, and there are some, uh, uh, maybe unintended consequences, but, uh, some people actually drive into the office five days a week. They drive in four days a week, they save that and they're all, they're, uh, derivative savings that are consequent to all of that. Again, that's why we have a trial.
I would point out one more fact that is just kind of a, a natural consequence of COVID. Our world kind of moved to this virtual, uh, meeting setting, it moved to working from home, there are so many opportunities out there for employees to receive these benefits and frankly, we are having a very difficult time finding people that want to work Monday through Friday. So yes, this is a benefit to us, it makes, since we can't pay more, it makes our positions a little more attractive when we are recruiting.
So on, in addition to no savings via salary for county employees, you also get a three-day weekend, right?
Yeah.
Well, like I said, Longview's been on this for at least more than five years. And I don't see any benefit to the public and the county assessor as of last year has already been closing the office on Friday. So what's the benefit to the public? I don't see any.
I'll just repeat that, uh, we are already uh, operating with inconsistent hours, it's confusing to the public, we're receiving complaints now, this is a trial period, an opportunity to provide extended services to see if this meets the needs to the public.
Al- although I don't think it may be necessary, uh, if Tracy Jackson's on, she can tell us a little bit about building and planning and her experience there regarding hours.
Hi Commissioners, I just got moved over. Um, for us, it, we are here from seven to five-thirty, um, we're here for the contractors, uh, early hours. Um, we get the schedules in and done and then we, um, um, service the customer better, we can get out in the field sooner, especially, um, a lot of them require the concrete pours, um, and they, I mean, they're just, we're kind of on their timeline for their, their service, so we're trying to provide the best customer service that we can, building and planning spent on, um, four-day work weeks for quite some years. It's worked out really well, especially in the early mornings, uh, to service the contractors, so.
Yeah, I, I, I haven't heard any complaints of, uh, the hours of building and planning and, uh, have you, Mister Weber?
No, I haven't, so, other, other than the people who don't realize it's closed when they come here.
Right.
And that, that. But it never follows with I wish they were here, because it was, I didn't know that they were closed, so that's, that's part of that information service and, and, uh, that, that is helpful, I think having offices open starting at seven o'clock in, in this community is, is a great advantage for doing that. Carolyn, there is actually, uh, excuse me?
Sorry, I'm sorry Dennis, um, I believe the Calitz PUD went to four-day work weeks just recently too, so it's kind of like we don't have phone calls that come in, if I'm here on Fridays, the phone does not ring. If I'm here on Fridays, the phone does not ring on Fridays. It's, it's ghost town.
Um Carolyn, there is a question that somebody asked about, are there drop boxes at city halls?
Uh no, our drop boxes in Calitz County are all permanent drop boxes, meaning they are drive up drop boxes. And they're all located in each of the cities next to the, the city's post office boxes. We wanted them to be um well-known destinations so that people who are already using those post office boxes would just automatically also use the ballot boxes.
But both Longview and Kelso at least have drop boxes relatively close to city hall also. And it's coincidental, but I don't know about the outlying communities.
No, uh none inside any buildings. These are all permanent drive up drop boxes, so people don't even have to get out of their car.
I think Ca- uh Castle Rocks is right at, at the parking lot, isn't it? Or they're at their city hall?
It's on this, I'm not sure where the city hall is. It's right in front of the library, right on the strip, so I'm not real sure where the city hall is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
We have a motion.
All right, uh yes, we do have a motion, okay.
So uh I'd like to call, I, I do call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion does carry. We are at a point in time where we are just right on schedule to go through the twenty twenty-three budget amendment hearing.
Good morning, Kathy Funt Baxter, um finance manager. And um the Office of Financial Management um is presenting budget amendments for the twenty twenty-three county budgets to increase appropriations and to account for additional expenditures and revenues as well as to dissolve a fund for emergency management special projects as the fund is no longer necessary. Other adjustments to transfer funds from the dissolved fund to the emergency management fund will be necessary. I'm here to answer any questions on the proposed amendments. And if you'd like me to recap any of those, I'll be happy to.
Um we workshop this on at least two previous occasions.
Yes, we did.
And uh
July tenth, I believe.
Yeah. So if I understand correctly, s- some of these adjustments are upon your recommendation, looking at revenues, not meeting the forecasts that we had. And so making adjustments so that we um don't overspend. And I think that's, that's wise to do that.
And we also have some revenues that are exceeding our budget.
New revenues. And, and it, we also, it also includes um the results of several discussions between the coroner and this board. And it's mounted in, in an additional quarter of a million dollars, I think, for the rest of the, the year for, for them to make up for.
Two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the coroner's office to meet their obligations.
Right. And I can't remember, uh did we put placeholders in for the opioid settlement funds when they came in?
Um when we, when they did come in, that was in our last budget amendment in the month of April. Um estimating the revenues to come in from that fund. And in this budget amendment, we're changing the department that those are associated with uh to the Department of Health and Human Services.
I, I can't help but comment on something that may be a little unpopular, but um the budget for the coroner, the coroner, the previous coroner was exiting and it was the, that person's responsibility to give us a a realistic budget. And that did not happen. And that should not have been that way.
Yeah, the budget was amended down um based upon recommendations of the previous coroner. And so this, uh the current coroner and myself went through all of the expenditures and anticipated expenditures for the year and uh arrived at this amended budget.
Then uh is it in this amendment where we're doing the rainy day fund or the?
Yes, that is one of the major um items we're showing on this budget amendment. Is this, uh you previously had approved establishing a budget um rainy day fund, um budget, it's called Budget Stabilization Fund. Uh you approved that. This budget amendment actually transfers funds into that fund from the general fund. And the amount of that is um one million five forty nine, one million five hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars.
And we, we call that the rainy day fund or a stabilization fund because it takes more than just a majority vote to expend those funds, right?
Correct. Uh you approved um a policy for this. And the policy states all commissioners unanimously must approve any transfers from this fund.
See, I, I'd like to repeat that. It's a very good point. Uh hmm money, money available is always attract, an attractive nuisance. But it's a necessary thing if you're gonna have prudent operations. You cannot foresee everything. So therefore it requires three commissioners to agree to tap into that fund. And then there are several restrictions that tell you what would be a valid issue.
Right, emergen- emergency needs, unforeseen um economic downturn in order to provide, continue to provide county services, things like that.
Dennis, do you remember if there was anything else key we should highlight?
Uh there were uh several other departments, but it was all relatively minor switches. Somewhere was switching some cash funds and, and fixing, um pretty much following recommendations of the state auditor's office too on, on a couple of those items. Just, just to make the flow of the money clearer and more transparent.
If you have no further questions, I'll open up the hearing. I hope you notice I'll use my left hand. The public hearing is now open. The public is welcome to come up and uh speak, ask questions. But they're not obligated to do so. I see nothing, no one, no one coming forward, no hands, so uh, oh.
Hello.
Good morning.
I was just trying to make sure this was the right time to make a public comment.
About this topic.
About, yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out.
The, yeah.
Which topic are we on, sorry?
We're on the, on the budget amendment for the twenty twenty-three budget.
Okay, um. So I was wondering like for the coroner's office, um cause I guess um I could ask Dana? Anyway, is it all right if I get your phone number so I could ask you some questions after the meeting? Okay, thank you for now.
Okay, I don't see anybody else. I'll close the public hearing. And I'll look to my colleague.
Thank you. Mister Chairman, I move that we approve the twenty twenty-three budget amendment as presented today.
I look for anyone else who wants to make a comment at this point. I think we've had plenty of opportunity. I call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. The motion does pass and I thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Patrick, are you doing the Rogers, Rogers Telecom uh ten-year non-exclusive franchise? Would you like to come up? Are we too early? Oh, we've got seven minutes, my apologies. Uh let me uh be comfortable and I'll uh open it up right now for uh seven minutes of public, public, public commentary on any topic.
That different from the one we just got?
Anyone uh wishing to speak on any topic? This is a, this is an opportunity.
Hi, um as you guys know, they're closing Large Mountain. And on the KGW eight website, it says that they plan on making seventy beds available in Longview. Do you know anything about that?
I, I didn't hear the very first thing that you said.
Uh Large Mountain.
Oh, yes. Oh.
Um and they plan on making seventy beds available in Longview. Do you know anything about that?
We, we actually had a discussion yesterday. Uh prosecuting attorney was here for a totally different other manner. We got to talking and um the we're not, we don't know anything about that. Nobody's contacted the county. Um the state does have a work release office building that has the capacity for about sixty beds.
Okay.
And the
So it's just
The conjecture is the state's taking care of that.
Okay.
Excellent, um. Ma- Ma- Marin is uh online with her hand raised and I appreciate that. Uh please go ahead and speak to us, Marin. She will address your question.
Yes, here she is. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. I contacted DOC yesterday to ask the question about the um, the use uh the information about opening a facility in Longview. Uh it is, does sound like their intent is to use the work release house to house the um inmates that are involved in the fire program. So that, that is their intent. It isn't official yet according to them and the details aren't worked out. But that is the plan so they can continue to assist with wildfires.
Would you mind restating that more slowly for my feeble mind?
Sure. And so with the closure of Large Mountain, uh the, their uh spokesperson stated that they intended to open a facility in Longview, a seventy bed facility. I reached out to a contact at Department of Corrections yesterday and he confirmed that that plan is to use the work release facility, which is located uh two doors down from the jail and use those beds to house the inmates that are currently at Large Mountain involved in the wildfire program. So they can continue to assist with wildfires um that occur locally.
So if you were a fire department, you're still happy that you have that capability available to you?
I, yeah, I would assume so.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the type, the level of um inmates at Large Mountain is not the same as Walla Walla or some of the other institutions. You, you mentioned yesterday, low, low risk or relatively low risk?
Correct, minimum security.
Minimum of security, okay. So not, not violent prone um inmates?
No, and it, it would require the state to relocate the uh inmates they are, they have housed at the work release facility currently. So they'll have to move those to other work release facilities in the state.
Okay. Thank you.
We have time for another comment? Or let's talk about your vacation plans for a moment. It doesn't make any sense to stop for two minutes, so.
Everybody's just so anxious for this wonderful next public hearing.
I imagine, I imagine so.
Okay, I guess I'll make a little noise. Um so moving those people from Large Mountain down here, wouldn't they be further away from fighting fires than if they were up there?
I, I assume that's the case, but uh I'm sure they factor that in there. I think Carolyn Funding Science said earlier, there's no perfect solution.
But it makes more common.
Well, uh the state made the decision to close Large Mountain, so that's not an option, so.
How long have they been closed?
About three months ago, was it? Yeah, it'll close in October, so.
So where are they right now?
Well, and one of the things that they discovered, I think that, if you know any, any more information, uh there, the number of folks is down. So they have a, a big facility, then it's expensive to run facilities like that with.
Ooh, gorgeous down, look at Dippity Doo running, you know what? But anyway, but where are they at this time?
They're still at Large Mountain at this time. But that facility is closing and.
That they're closing, which again, doesn't make common sense.
Well, it, it if, if you suspect that they were just open the gates and let the folks out, that, that, that doesn't happen in.
I've been up there before.
I beg your pardon?
I've been up there before and it was actually nice for them to be out there rather than in town.
That, that could be. And you know, along those lines, I regret very much, or I don't like the fact that the NACEL youth camp was closed.
The S.O. youth camp? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a similar situation. I, I'm not sure what the economics of, of all that is and the politics, but our, our view is rather a little limited. We have to live with the situation that has dropped on our laps.
Well, elections have consequences and stolen elections have catastrophic consequences.
That's a good theme to keep in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's begin with the Rogers Telecom franchise.
Good morning Commissioners, Patrick Harbison, Public Works. With me is Anna Lundey from Public Works. Uh this morning, we have before you uh a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise with Rogers Telecom. Uh this is one of the most complicated franchises we've ever brought forward. So bear with me as I try to explain the situation. Uh Rogers installed conduit inside the Olympic uh pipeline right away in nineteen ninety-eight under a substantial shoreline development permit. Uh couple of months ago, uh Mox Communications approached us about installing fiber optic within conduit and vaults in this right away. Uh we found out that Rogers owns the conduit. Someone else owns the vaults. Mox would own the fiber. So three different entities would own what we would normally consider one single system. Each one of them is required to get their own individual franchise. Cause as you can imagine, locates are required, insurance is required. Who would be ultimately responsible? So each individual wants required to get their own individual. The franchise has been negotiated uh amongst uh between um our prosecuting attorney's office and their attorneys. Um it has standard insurance requirements, standard locate requirements. Uh as uh normal up to this uh point, there's no um annual fee or franchise fee required. They do, they are required to pay for any administrative costs such as our attorney costs or a staff time uh required to um administer the permit, but no franchise fee. That's just like a standard fee like we could do on, on cable. Um the, this franchise is only applicable to areas within the public right away. So basically where the Olympic pipeline crosses, Clammer River Road, Green Mountain Road, Ostrander Road. So basically where the Olympic Pipeline crosses, Clammer River Road, Green Mountain Road, Ostrander Road, those type, those places. Um, I do know that, uh, I'm not sure if Rogers is online. Um, yeah, uh, can I ask if they are?
They would probably be in the attendees list. Is there a name I might be looking for?
It would be Adrian McDonald or Samuel Stotinsky.
If there is a Rogers Telecom person online, please hold up your hand flag or, you know, flag. I don't see any
Okay, I'm, I'm asking for legal purposes. Uh, then I'm gonna turn it over to Doug if you wouldn't mind.
That would be good. I always like hearing from Doug.
I have handed you, Doug, I've handed them a copy of the document.
Thank you. Let me take a few, this'll take about ten minutes and the reason for that is, as Patrick indicated, it's somewhat a complex, uh, interaction with Rogers Communications. They are Canadian corporation.
If I could, if I could interrupt you for a moment, Doug.
Sure.
Uh, because it's going to go into a public hearing, would you give us the abstract if there is anything that the public needs to pay attention in detail from what you're going to say?
Yes, um, the focus has to be in, in terms of the hearing itself. What I'm trying to do is, is present Rogers' position on this and our response back. Uh, and that's what I'll take just a few minutes to go through. And that then will be part of the public discussion and part of the board's deliberation. So the first element is that the county did review its records. There was no record of this matter having been franchised. Now, the reason we can be certain of that is twofold. Number one, the shorelines permit did not cover areas within the county right of way. They covered the, they covered areas outside and that was the nature of the request. Secondly, as you know, today, this is a legislative process. It would have had to gone through the board for approval of a pre-existing franchise with Rogers or predecessor of Rogers. For this line, there was no record of that. So again, this is, uh, currently Rogers is occupying a county right of way. Um, contrary to statute and just briefly on that, we've had this discussion. To something, to some extent, the county is a trustee for county roads as an agent of the state. Although the state's given the county control over county roads and, and the operation of county roads and establishment of county roads. But it's all pursuant to statute as is the franchising process. So we go through this process. It's not contractual. It's not per se a negotiation in, in real estate. It is a legislative process governed by statute, governed by case law and governed by, um, mandates and coming from both the uh, Cable Act, for instance, and the Telecommunications Act that we treat all franchisees similarly. In other words, we treat them equally in the process. So we started with a format that is consistent with franchisees, pipelines, telecommunications, um, and utilities all have utilized this same, um, franchising format. So yeah, I would break down the comments of Rogers, starting on page six. Um, as Patrick noted, they were worried about what fees are being charged. Uh, the response back was basically that the county is entitled, is required uh, to prevent gifting of public funds and resources to recoup its cost of actually doing the franchising. The second part of it is that they were con- dissatisfied or concerned with having to do relocations, whether as a consequence of county actions or as consequence of other franchisees. And again, title, excuse me, the RCW's chapter thirty-six fifty-five, which governs franchising, is fairly clear on this that, uh, the cost of operating and occupying a county franchise falls solely on the franchisee or the person granted the rights. This is permissive occupancy. It's not statutory. It's not mandated. It's not required. Uh, so that to the extent that they have to relocate, move, um, their operation, arguably, it's probably not going to happen, but if they do, statutorily and legally, it's on, it's obligated that they do it themselves. They were also concerned about whether the county would do inspections and the response back was uh, those inspections are not only a consequence of the county's franchising process, but also an obligation generally of the county to maintain its roads in a safe, um, insecure position with recent case law indicating that not only must the roadway be maintained in, if safe and um, passable position for the public, but you ought to also have to be cognizant of what's in the right way to ensure that use of the right of way does not create an off-road hazard should a car leave the right of way. Um, there was a question about certificate of insurance and as we indicated to them in Washington, a certificate of insurance or what's called an accord document that you've seen doesn't, uh, carry any legal weight with it. And we've simply substituted that with language, uh, that says if we need to look at your policy and you're concerned about it having trade secrets or putting you in a difficult financial position for purposes of stockholders or whatever, we just need to physically look at it. Uh, and we can, we can arrange that. Um, they asked that if the county right of way is ever vacated, that the county impose an easement so that they can maintain the usage of the right of way. Uh, the county or it's annexed, uh, the county can't guarantee that because again, um, as with this franchise, uh, the vacation process is a legislative process with the board then sitting, making a decision what's in the best public interest. Um, lastly, they had some questions as to um, the insurance. I didn't make any changes to that. Um, there was some feedback from the risk pool. Uh, but my comment is generally with telecoms, uh, we don't run into uh, excessive insurance concerns. I think, uh, our discussions primarily that have been strident have been with the pipeline folks where we've talked about the offsite impacts of, of either an escape or an explosion. So I have really no input on the, the request for insurance changes and I would just defer to the board on that. So in summation, we rejected much of their requests for changes. Uh, the, we, and we reverted back to the original content, which again has been signed off on by multiple telecoms, utilities and even the uh, pipeline folks, including the pipeline folks that are uh, protected under the Interstate Pipeline Act, the telecoms that are protected under the uh, Telecommunications Act and the cable folks that operate under the federal authority of the uh, Cable Act, all recognizing that the format the county currently utilizes is in the best public interest, um, not unreasonable. Um, not restrictive to their operations. So that's my presentation, gentlemen.
So in order for us to approve, if we wanted to, um, we, we have to get a, a fresh copy, right? A clean copy? Because they've made, they've made comments and you've, you've, like you said, you've rejected most of their requested changes, so.
Yeah, and you've, it's already sent a copy of my changes to Kelly and that's already in the record. Um, I did that this morning. And they've received a copy of it, uh, as well, well, in advance. Um, so the only changes you're really looking at are to the insurance terms. Um, they've requested some changes and I didn't, I didn't make any changes to those.
So Doug, in, in one of my, um, in, in one of the resolutions that we passed this morning, I think, in the fine print was some reference to certifying that we're not contracting with anyone who has any connection with Russia since they're under embargoes and suspensions from the federal government. Is, since this is a foreign country or foreign corporation, do we need a certification that somehow they're not, they're not somehow connected, controlled by Russian influence? I don't, I, I'm not sure what the process is for
Yeah.
doing that other than a certification statement.
They operate through a subsidiary that is actually a US corporation. It's, uh, incorporated in the state of Delaware. So strictly speaking, although we've been in communication with council in Ontario, Canada, uh, the company that you're franchising is, um, Rogers Telecom US Incorporated, a Delaware corporation.
Hey, uh, question for you, Doug. What is the proper procedure? I, I, not having a, a clean copy in my hand, I'm left to think, am I approving if I get to that point? Uh, what kind of copy?
The the copy that was presented for the public review was the original copy that went out, um, for publication and is currently being reviewed. Rogers' response, I took the place, for lack of a better word, because that also needed to be entered into the record that they had requested some changes. They're not, apparently they're not appearing personally. But again, the board's trying to decide what's in the best public interest. So the copy you'd be operating on would be um, the original version. If you want me to go over the changes in the insurance issues, I can, I could read them uh, without re-commenting on them. Uh, but I don't view them as, as, uh, uh, for my purposes, they aren't substantive as to exactly, uh, what uh, is being addressed uh, for purposes of um, the actual placement of and continued use of that, uh, the total, their, uh, dog fiber lines or their fiber lines. So I think you can, I think you can proceed to hearing on the original version and then take into consideration what I presented to you, um, as over testimony for an alternative uh, to the original version.
So Doug, I, I may have missed, uh, something in your opening comments. Has the work already been done?
Yes, so they, they put it in the ground, uh, many years ago without notifying the county. Um, and again, I don't, I think Rogers is a um, successor and interest to this, but the original company to this, you know, but rather line straight to, from, I believe, Seattle to um, Portland, maybe points beyond without, uh, you know, facing with the county, uh, for use of the county right of way. So
So the importance of the
The
The, the importance of the franchise agreement is to make sure that any, any future damage that occurs within the right of way is taken care of by the company, not, not the taxpayers, right?
Correct.
That's basically simplified right down.
Yeah, the, the background to all of this is that state law has declared that use of the county right of way is primarily for, uh, the traveling public, which means that if there has to be a relocation or some type of adjustment on the county right of way, the franchisees are notified or anybody that's in the right of way is notified that they need to relocate. So the county can perform its primary obligations with regard to the road and use of the, that right of way for road purposes. If they don't, then statutorily we can remove that, we can move it for them. So it, it all goes back to the primary point in the, all of this is that the state has declared that um, right of ways are primarily for roadways. Uh, anything that's left over in the right of ways is a secondary use. And if it's there, it's got to have, it has to be franchised. And franchised with conditions to ensure A, this, which you'll find under, uh, your chapter thirty-six fifty-five as part of your hearing findings, that this interferes to the least extent to those road purposes, which you can do if there's a franchise with, like I said, with all those conditions on moving and et cetera, et cetera. And that it's in the public interest again, uh, because, uh, compliance with the law is I, in this case is certainly in the public interest and certainly um, Calhoun County taxpayers. So that's why at least this office is recommending that, um, you adopt the original version, um, and with the exception perhaps of the, uh, insurance coverage issues, which again, I haven't commented on. Okay. Any more questions?
Yep. I'm, uh, I'm wondering, uh, who signs what? That is to say, I'm, I would assume that the grantee would have signed a document saying, yes, I want this. And then we, the grant wars would subsequently sign.
This is the one document that you signed first.
All right.
Because it's a legislative enactment, you basically legislate that you're going to offer a franchise to this individual to occupy the county right of way. The interesting part here is there ought to be there. Um, if they don't sign it, well, we'll revisit that in the near term.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, uh, I was going to ask about the timeliness of this issue, but how many years has this been going on? No, okay, never mind. We don't need to spend any time. Uh, the fee is of interest to me, uh. Can you quantify that?
So, uh, we, uh, Doug's office sends, uh, Public Works all of, uh, their costs that have, they've incurred. We gather all Public Works costs we've incurred. We send that invoice to Rogers prior to us sending your signed copy. They have to pay that invoice before we send them the signed copy. And then, once we send the signed copy, they send, they sign it and send it back. We have to receive their signed copy within thirty days, so they don't really have a chance to argue much of anything.
Okay, thank you. So it's a one-time fee?
Yes, and it's, it, it's T and M of what it took us to administer. That's it.
Right, and in a re, in, uh, in general, uh, all the, in general, no, actually we don't charge any franchise fees on a per-usage basis or something like that. Strictly T and M upstart.
Correct, not for telecommunications. Uh, he did discuss inspections in here. We do charge for inspections once, if they cut the asphalt and we have an inspector on site, we will charge time and materials for the inspector to be on site and inspect that. Because once again, the taxpayers shouldn't bear the burden of
Right. Dennis, good time to open up the public hearing?
I think so.
So again, the magic left-handed gavel. The public hearing is open. This is a time for the public to come up and ask questions, make any comments. I think that's probably the correct answer. This is sort of an arcane perfunctory kind of thing to do. Uh, I don't see any hands. So last call. I close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt the franchise agreement as presented by corporate, by our council.
The motion is to approve the, uh, ten-year non-exclusive franchise as has been presented to us, uh.
That would include those insurance adjustments that he mentioned.
Includes all the adjustments, correct. Uh, I don't see anybody speaking up. This is an opportunity if you have more questions. Seeing none, I call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. The motion does pass. And, uh, we're now going to go back to the public uh, public comment period, although Public, uh, public comment period, although, oh, by the way, I thank you. You left the public with no questions. So this is a time for anyone in the, in the public to speak on anything they would like to. They would like to express. If I run the gavel fast enough, we'll avoid. So my comment today is, I believe that um, and I'm not sure about uh how much authority you have over the. Health and Human Services um of what you can have them say or do. However, I do find it, uh, it would be important now for. And for somebody to issue a, it's really weird to see myself on the big screen like that. I'm glad it's not in four K, I should have combed my hair. Um. So, you know, I think it's time that uh we recognize that this actions during COVID were way off base. And I think anybody that was reasonable mind would know that the mask thing was ridiculous. And forcing vaccinations on people also a really bad thing, it's been bad for our state and bad for our economy. And so, it's not like they can go back and undo anything. But I think it's a time now to say, hey, you know what, we got wrong, we're sorry. I think at the very least, they could say, give the all clear. You don't have to wear a mask anymore. You know, I, I constantly see people on a daily basis, you know, walking on the street by themselves, wearing a mask. Which is their right to do that, I'm not knocking it if they need to do that for their mental well-being or whatever, but. I think at the very least, there should be like an all-clear, you know, it's like, okay, you don't have to have your mask anymore. And, you know, uh, I don't know, can you guys do that? Can you, I mean, you guys are off the hook because you kind of came out with the resolution not to follow along with that stuff, which was a good thing. And so I'm not calling on you guys to do that necessarily, but I know that during that time, you know, I was, you would see their posts. Especially in Facebook, and it'd be like, wear your mask, get a vaccination, get your kids vaccinated. And we know now that those things were wrong, and I think that we deserve an apology. That's uh, that's actually interesting, if you were to go, I don't know about today, but yesterday, if you gone down to. Building and planning, you would have seen an employee uh who would attend to you at the front desk. That employee had a mask. And uh, the purpose of the mask in that case was what you've seen for years. If you traveled in, say, Japan, into Japan, you'd see occasionally people with a mask as they walked down the street. Typically, that mask is uh worn by people who say, I have a cold or I have a fever. And I don't want to contaminate other people, but I have to conduct business or something like that. Uh, it wouldn't be reasonable for us to do anything. At all to mandate either way. Now, we can, we can say something, but we have done so even more strongly than in words. We have done that in our actions, and I think that should be sufficient. About being uh, about your comments regarding HHS and our publications and the website and the. All the stories in the website, I agree with you, I was unhappy at the time, I was asking for a more. Balanced approach on the website, but I did not prevail. And uh, yes, apologies are due, and I'm not so sure how apologies are going to handle. All the damage that was done. One of the damages we saw was uh all the eateries that went out of. Business like uh. Duffy's Two is the only one that survived because it violated the mandates of the day. They collected a fine of a, totally an over a million. And uh, they just refused to pay it and refused to close their doors. That should give the public a clue that when there are mandates that are not. Uh, reasonable, certainly, one could argue unconstitutional. Uh, the public needs to take action, Duffy's Twos did and they survived. Many other restaurants just closed and they're never going to open again. Uh, do we have anything that works to address this? Um, I'm thinking about it, I welcome any comments you have along, along those lines. Mister Weber.
Well, I, I think it's one of those situations where the public has already demonstrated their, their feeling on it. I mean, the rules, we've, we've moved on from it, I think.
Yeah.
And uh. I think, information I continually get is. On other issues, there are other more pressing issues for us to be addressing, and, and we are working on those, so.
I don't see any hands up.
This uh virtual way of doing business is leading down the wrong path. And for those of you who are awake, you know what I mean. Um, yesterday, I was listening to a host on MSNBC. Yammering on about President Trump and his attorneys and the other side, and yammering on and on and et cetera. So the point is that the host is the talking head because on all the screens they're showing. Of all involved, there's no audio, none of what's really being said in the courtroom with those attendees. On Real America's Voice News, the news with the American flag, they actually play the news with audio. So that we, the people, know from their own voices what they are saying. I believe the situation would refer to the truth. Um, thou shalt not bear false witness against thy neighbor. With that said, we all need to pray clearly for God to put the right people in their prospective offices. And then, thought I'd have a little fun. Oh, excuse me, taxes, if I understand right, taxes are voted on by the people, is that correct?
No.
No?
Uh, when it comes to that kind of question, I, I would often defer to Mister Weber. I will always argue that we are lulled into the belief that we have taxation with representation. And the answer is, yes, but is it meaningful? And the answer is no, my opinion.
So there are uh very few tax levies that the state legislature allows us to impose. After a vote of the people. One example is the three tenths of one percent tax, sales tax in Longview and Kelso for the city transit system. So that's a very, very targeted amount that is allowed. On the other hand, the legislature said to the county commissioners, you can impose a one-tenth of one percent tax for behavioral health purposes. And that did not require uh a vote of the people.
So it depends?
Most, most votes of the people, I mean, uh, most of the taxes don't depend upon a vote of the people. Probably the most common example, though, comes from uh junior taxing districts. Who want to borrow to build new buildings, like a new school or to remodel schools. And they'll, they'll get voters' permission for bond issue. That entitles them to borrow money at a lower rate because the voters have approved. Um, but we haven't done that, we've borrowed money and issued bonds, but we haven't gone to a vote of the people. It's just a decision that, that, that we made, consequently, the interest rates are a tad bit higher. Couple of other. Uh, oh, there's also, um, you can raise property taxes for a special levy, an excess levy. Um, by a vote of the people, schools do that also, they do bond issues and they do special levies. Um, but again, most of the taxes we pay, though, are, are not voted on each year at all. But, but they, but the expenditures and the levying of those taxes, those are decisions made by elected officials. That's part of our legislative function, whether you're on the city council or uh state legislature or the county commission, so.
Yeah, if, if I could add under that, there, there are the direct obvious. Taxes that people get to see, then there, there, what I call the uh implicit taxes. So we, uh, the citizens approve the school bond. But that goes directly onto your property tax. It was voted by the people, but most of the people don't want to pay it, but they voted for it.
The other thing that um affects your tech, your property tax levels is if the value of your property goes up. It becomes more valuable because the market conditions, you know, raise the prices, competition for, for housing. Being what it is, you're, the, the value of your property goes up, and there's the potential, then your tax bill will go up. Uh, a- as a result, and I think probably that more than any other, any other thing generates. Complaints about taxes.
Yeah.
They get their new assessments and they know their taxes are going to go up because their property is worth more.
We, we, we have to be clear on that too, though, there uh, the school bond, the, the. Is paid through property tax, but it's actually the, the, the bond payment is what determines what money will be. Will come from the property, so if your property went up fifty percent across the board in the county. And uh, you, you wouldn't have to pay fifty percent more of the school bond portion. That would stay, however, the, the levy in the fire department levy, all of those are just a levy rate. Directly against the value of the property, those will go up if your house increased by fifty percent. Your taxes are going to be up by fifty percent in that category.
Now, about twenty years ago, there was an initiative signed by the people. That limited property tax increases to no more than one percent a year. Very, very active campaign, very controversial campaign, it was approved. Only to be later thrown out by the courts as there is some, some uh loophole that, that uh. Got, that they used. And after that happened, the state legislature went ahead and adopted the one percent limit. And so we're still operating under the one percent limit, with the exception of those special levies and special bond issues. We can only collect one percent more one year over the other. With, with a few exceptions, if there's new property being built, that's just new valuation that can be added on, so uh. So there's a, there's a lot of, lots of uh ways that the public has their impact, input. On the level of taxation that, that we have, but um, we, we, the taxes aren't sunsetted. Unless we put it on. And, and actually, this commission has had a sunset on the behavioral health tax, that's the only one. And it's coming up in two years?
No, it's coming up.
Later this year.
Uh, the behavioral health tax, yeah, it's this year, uh, end of this year or this, this spring of next year.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, there, there's a, we, we mentioned, we opened up the meeting regarding uh elections. And the importance of them, well, if you, if you, you heard about twenty percent show up. For election at this point of an off-year election, and yet that they're council members and all that. So if you do the math, or do, do the arithmetic. A fifth of the public, the voting public. Determines. The election of a candidate at best, and it's actually. Candidates don't get a hundred percent, so you take the twenty percent that did vote. About ten percent supported the candidate that prevailed, so that's ten percent. And then you go into the uh presenting that in the city council when they decide on. Fees or whatever it is, it may end up impacting the, the, this. The taxpayer, uh, you can see the numbers multiply out that probably on average. Fifteen percent of the people at best determine what, what our taxes are. In my book, that means there's a systemic problem in there, and that's why we have such a terrible problem. Because taxes are not viewed favorably. At the beginning of World War Two, people were happy to buy US savings bonds, were happy to do anything to help the country. But a lot of people are not happy to do things they don't believe in. And I can pick examples on both sides of the aisle where they're forced to pay for something, they find abhorrent, and that's wrong.
Um, yeah, cause I was gonna ask about um how the fees. Um, did they get voted on, how did they come up? Cause I just like, well, uh, for, I, I'm gonna back up a little bit. On, when I was growing up, my dad, when he'd pay property taxes. Anyway, if he would get like, buy like a used trailer, just something, and believe me, it would unfortunately deteriorate a bit. He's gone now, but anyway, it would deteriorate, and then through the years, maybe get something else, but it wasn't top, you know, it was like, needed to worked on. And then they'd come out and they would take up his property taxes when it should actually went even lower. But the whole thing I'm saying, it was just ridiculous, but with that said, the bees, how did they come to be?
Boy, that's a hundred and one answers, right? Uh, did you want to take that?
So with Calhoun County, our fees typically are the ones levied in building and planning for. For building permits, those kinds of things, some health permits. Um, if you're in a service club that operates a food booth at, say, Go Forth, there's an inspection fee. Those, those inspection fees, the fees are designed to cover the costs of conducting the inspection. Or, or this, take care of the service, so um, once a year, the departments present to us. Uh, a, a review of the fees, and we, we approve them. Uh, in, in fact, I think the last time, the result was a reduction of fees. Cause they went ahead and reviewed the, how they compiled those fees and realized didn't cost as much to do them as, as it used to. Technology, it has a lot to do with that too, so um, we, we raise them, we lower them based on the, what. What, what staff convinces us is, is appropriate for cost recovery.
Those like when people go in and like, if I want to get car tabs or do certain, you know, business like that. And they add fees and like to go to the um state parks and this and that, the fees, and then they have services and this and that. And I am a little bit wiser in my years, of course, and just, you know. It's like there's so much of this just keeps coming up and up, and some years back, I was like, you know. They, they want to raise the minimum wage, but when they raise the minimum wage, then per se, your milk, bread, go up. Okay, so every time they raise the minimum wage, then things get more expensive. And I'm like, so, you know, let's say when I was twenty-five, I'm thinking in a hundred years, that means that. Milk's going to be a hundred dollars a gallon, so how much is it going to be ours? It's not making sense, it doesn't work, it just doesn't work. So, thank you for that.
So, so the um state parks fee that's on your license tabs, that's optional, you don't have to pay.
Right, I know that.
That's, that goes to help the state, and that's a state decision.
They get enough.
And uh, uh, I know, we, we just paid our car tabs in this, and we live in the city of Longview. So they tacked on another forty-dollar fee for, it's another tax to help with their road maintenance program.
So when are you guys going to come up with some horse and carriage parks for us along the street?
If you're inside the city limits, that's the city's responsibility, so if you're.
So you'd ask them to put up a place for the horses?
You can ask them.
Cause like recently, there was a guy riding a, I saw a video of this guy riding on the freeway on his horse and. Motorcycles around him and some uh cops. Motorcycles around him and some cops and. It's like they were talking about it on the TV and it's like, I guess I can't really get him. And it's like, they weren't really trying to pull him over. They were just kind of following him. It was interesting. It'd go pretty good. I'm thinking horsepower. But anyway, it's cool to watch and it just went on. And so anyway, I thought I'd have a little fun here. And I hope you don't mind. I only got like two of them. Biden says dementia might earth. I've always been this dumb. Biden Harris, one nation under fraud clearly visible with bribery and corruption for all. So God bless America and Trump is our president. Thank you.
Just just before you go.
Yes, sir.
The ignoring the last two statements, you were asking some pretty fundamentally interesting questions and there are. There are some philosophic issues in that are rather substantial. So for example. People in the Highlands are going to pay property taxes like other people. When the city decides to build a. They build a park for an activity that is really not. Popular in the Highlands, nor is the park going to be built in the Highlands. You're essentially taking. People's funds from the Highlands to pay for something they're really not interested in. And if you look at public assets. They typically are very expensive. The bathrooms at Lake Saka Jawa get messed up time and time again. We've had to rebuild the public bathrooms that. That are our county parks. One could make an argument is don't charge those fees, don't don't charge those as a tax, charge them as a fee. That's the one point. Another. Point is. When I was very young, you could go to parks and they were all included with your general. Taxes. We've had. Dennis can probably talk to you, but the thousands of ways that the legislature has shifted what was included before. Their 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 costs had their. Their taxation of it hasn't changed, but they moved what used to be free. They now. Push it on the county to have to pay for it. So there are all these games going on. And you you your questions are actually all around that. And it it requires, it's a pretty extensive discussion. There's nothing here we can really resolve. I just want people to be alert. And fundamentally, you always look and see. There's nothing for free. So somebody is paying for it. Is it? Morally, ethically supportable that this set of people should pay for that set of people or. Anything overall.
Okay, um, when Trump was in office, gas was down, things were going well, but he was, they had him, the Biden or yes, the. Obama Biden administration constantly had him in the courtroom fighting against their stuff. And then with Biden and the open borders.
Yeah.
People coming up.
If I could interrupt you, I I prefer not going into national politics on the matter. I.
I thought this was public comment, sir.
It is public comment, but you were trying to respond to my comment. And I'm saying I I I I use the word I prefer. Uh, to. So if you're using what I said for that, I I'm saying please don't. If you want to continue to talk, have at it.
Well, with that said, sir, I am in the process. I've been watching these things. Other people don't see. I've been because they don't watch real news. Newsmax and OAN or OANN. Anyway, they're closed. But with Real America's Voice, they come on in the morning and they tell what day it is. And so. With that said, I'm been watching all this stuff happen. And with all these mainstream media, they're not telling people all around the world what's really happening around the world. And we're living in the end times. I don't care what other people said. If you read the word. You and you could see these real true things going on without propaganda on mainstream media. Then you would understand. And I just don't want anybody. It's like they're headed for us to go to the a microchip. In our palm or in our head like with Neuralink, okay? And one thing I've learned recently is if you get that in your body, it's electrical. It's going to burn you up. You're going to start your humanities, your skin, everything's going to start falling off. And that's sad. That's really pathetic. But I just wanted to share that with you. And if that's okay with you, I'd like to be done.
Uh, yeah, that you it's your choice. I I I do want to use this opportunity to say in general. We often can do things, we are permitted to do things and the real question is, should we do it? And that's that's.
True.
That that is on us.
Right.
Uh, this this hearing room is for the purpose of the. Public for the most part to deal with issues germane to where we are. So. As a public administration kind of thing, for every person who would want to come up here and. Make a comment on something, there's going to be ten other people to. They're going to be at least, there're going to be other people that sit on the other side. They would say almost the very same thing. I do in general, there's not you just in general, I I would like the public to keep in mind. That we can occupy our entire time on on something that is not going to be productive, but is going to lead to a. Polarization that really doesn't serve anybody any good.
What doesn't serve anybody? What I'm saying?
If you want me to comment specifically on that, what I would have done is simply is is outline it. Without too many names is saying, there are other news sources out there than what I think is called the mainstream media. My personal opinion is probably much closer line to what you said, but it's an opinion. I I cannot prove some things.
Okay, because this is the deal with Real America's Voice. They talk, they go out like Ben Burgwam. He went out down to the southern border. He's the first person in America to do this. And then he had another guy named Oscar Elblu Ramirez, that they went down there. And Biden wouldn't let them do like any filming at the wall. So my point is this. They go out and even through the nation, the different states and stuff. Like one place they did a rally for Trump and it was a town of approximately five thousand people and fifty thousand people showed up. So all these wonderful things are going on and I just want the public to know the truth. That's all I came to do. And I'm responsible to do my part because if I don't share. The word. Then it it's my fault. When it's time for judgment, their blood being shed to go down is on my hands. And so I have to do my part. And I appreciate if you would understand that. And I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we have two participants with hands up.
Oh.
Vicky, Vicky Eckert has been waiting for a long time and then Shannon just popped up. So.
That that puts me in a then a family issue. We'll go with the first person first. Vicky.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, my question I that I came up with when I was listening be to. Comments before we had the last public meeting. Has there been anything said recently regarding McNeil Island and the seven extreme? Sex offenders that they plan to send to Kellis County?
I haven't heard anything. I I haven't looked into the general claim and. About the Kellis County is a dumping ground and I I really haven't found substantiation there. That that that's really all I know.
Okay, then I have another question. You were talking about taxes and they said that as a property value goes up, the taxes go up. But if property value goes down, do the taxes stay up?
It really depends on the kind of tax. If it's.
Okay.
If it's a bond payment, remember I said if if it costs a hundred dollars to do the bond payment, it doesn't matter. They're going to get a hundred dollars. If the property valuation of the county is at a hundred dollars, then the tax rate will be. One dollar per dollar.
Okay.
So that would be a hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay. Shannon.
Hello. So first of all, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, Arn, for coming out to our summer kickoff at the H and A. It was nice to see you. Sorry, I couldn't get you in the dunk tank. That would have been fun.
Head first?
Huh?
Head first?
First. Oh, I'm a nice person. Come on now. I just, as we're sitting here and we're talking about elections and we're talking about all this stuff going on and you mentioned the Highlands and stuff that's going on. I know the people are listening. I'm hoping there's a lot of people in the Highlands listening. Ballots are going out. And I really just want to encourage people to do their due diligence, look at what's going on. Research what's, you know, the people that are on there. I only had like two things to vote for online. So, you know, hey. But I just really want to encourage people to to vote. I I really am. And if they aren't registered, they can come and see me at H and A. I have register forms. So. I think I can, I can do that. I I talked to the ladies in the voter office. And I filled out that form last time. I'm pretty sure it's still valid. But I just really want people to get out there instead of sitting at home. I'm not going to vote. It's not going to make a difference. The more you say it's not going to make a difference and you're not going to vote. Then then it doesn't. You're not making a difference yourself. So that's all I really had to say. But.
I really appreciate that and it at this at that the local level, every vote does count.
Yeah, I'm I'm a big, big time on vote local. Do that part. Make your voice heard. So I appreciate you letting me take that little moment there. So.
Thank you. We appreciate.
Maybe I can get you in the dunk tank, you and Weber in the dunk tank.
You drop us both in at the same time and we'll have a big old splash and we'll get sued for flooding the neighborhood.
One at a time then, one at a time. No headfirst, I promise.
We'll hold you to that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Uh, my comment is somewhat similar. I appreciated the fact that you. Guys brought us through the part that so few percentage are voting. But the people being elected that make the decision of how your tax dollars and the money that's collected is being used. Well, that's. You want to say, the say has to become in who you put in those positions. And to have in the off-year election to be in the neighborhood of twenty percent, you said, or even less than that. It's pretty sad to think then later on you're. You have given up your say. We have got to, as a people, take back. The rights that the constitution gave to us. It says you want your freedoms. It needs to be down to the level the people ought to make those decisions and run everything. So take that opportunity and it's been given through the vote. So I too just want to publicly encourage people to. To cast your vote. Get a little bit more informed, investigate who's running for the office, see who's consistent with what you think is important. I've gotten a couple of phone calls that have have asked me specific questions and I appreciate that because again. I know you guys appreciate input from the public. It helps you as you make your decisions. It's not that you don't come here. And you have your own opinions. But I learned something early on when I served on boards. It's not about me. It's about what what's most important for that person. Who's board I'm representing. If it was school board, it was all about kids. It was Chamber of Commerce. It was all about. What's good for the business community and on and on and on like that, you know. So again, I. I know that you guys stop for a second and you look at what's best. For all the people in the county, not just a small amount or not the ones that are speaking the loudest. But this ones that are really presenting a case, that's what's best for all of us because we're in this together. But you want the best representation and you want to have those things and be part of the process. And the process is starts. With running for office if you want to, but beyond that, it's about voting and taking your time. And I appreciate you guys also giving. The public time to comment. It says a lot. I I just feel like a person has a say and that's that's the refreshing thing. Just thanks.
I certainly appreciate that. I would. Submit to a slight. But very crucial. Modification is. What what happens? Is we're a constitution and I see Carolyn's hand is up. Excellent. Hold on, Carolyn. The the. We are a re- a republic and too many people now fall into the category of. The foxes in the hen house deciding what they're going to have for a meal. And so. I think we are individually, morally, ethically obligated to. Vote with the big picture as opposed to what's in it for me. And we have largely lost that fundamental. It's always seems to me like. What's in it for me? Consequently, we buy the votes and that is not a pleasant picture to see. The United States should be above what's in it for me. It's what's in it for the aggregate. Of my society and the future of my. Of the of the country. Thirty one trillion in debt speaks very badly for us. Anyhow, appreciate that. Mr. Weber.
Um, we've heard the statistic that about twenty twenty percent of the voters may be voting in this current primary election. I do remember being in an election when the vote total was only eight percent.
Oh.
And I won. But I didn't. It was a unique situation. There were four positions open for city council. None of us had opposition that year. So there wasn't, you know, there really wasn't a reason for people to get out. And sometimes that happens. Um, but that's not happened recently because I think participation is up. The interest is is up. And we we very rarely have unopposed candidates. Just doesn't happen every once in a while, but. I I I think participantly participation levels have improved. But again, it depends on the local issues and it depends on, sometimes it depends on the weather, you know, and people don't want to get out and even deliver the ballots. So. Never can tell.
So let's go to Carolyn.
I appreciate the opportunity and I don't care what you are saying in the meeting. This is free advertising. And I'm glad that you're just talking about it, but I did want to clarify some questions that were just brought up about voter registration drives. If candidates or advocacy groups, parties, whomever out there registering people to vote. You a hundred percent have the right to hand out voter registration forms or direct people to the website. Uh, where you have risk or I should say requirements is when you collect those forms. I actually don't recommend people collecting the forms. And and if you do, you should be signing a form with the elections office and adhering to state law. So once you collect those forms, you have a very limited time in which you can sit on those. You have a duty to turn those in. Within specific timelines or you can be penalized. I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Great discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And as soon as Carolyn turns her hand off, we we will have no hands. Thanks, Carolyn. We are due for a. Bit opening. But we have one, we have another gentleman to speak. Is that acceptable to you?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
You should have a comment on Carolyn's earlier message about urging people to vote, cast their ballot at the drop boxes provided by the, by the county elections office. I have a, a good friend of mine, a neighbor, and he, the last election, yeah, last November, he, uh, put his mail, his ballot in the mail, uh, at his mailbox at his house and was picked up by the post office. And, uh, his vote never did get counted. You know, cuz anybody can go in and check to see whose vote was counted and, and what the status is of their ballot. And, and he, he, his was somehow lost in the mail. So yeah, I would urge people to.
So, so when, when they receive ballots that are past the deadline, they're marked with the post, the postmark. There, there's, the canvassing board inspects them, they double check.
Yeah, his, his never was, uh, received by the county election office.
Oh, it was, it was totally lost, yeah.
Yeah, it was lost.
And, and there are issues too when ballots are found after the certification. Now what do you do? Oh, Carolyn wants to chime in, go ahead.
Oh, I appreciate you guys allowing me a little bit of time. There are a lot of questions, so, uh, something that's important to note is that each of those postal mailboxes has different collection times. So when you drop anything in a postal mailbox, it'll have what time the mailman is going to come collect those boxes. And sometimes it's only once a week. Don't take that risk with your ballot, put it in a ballot drop box.
So if I think I'm depositing my ballot just before eight o'clock, when the polls close, chances are I've lost my vote, is that not right?
That's absolutely correct in almost every postal mailbox, because you have to have a postal endorsement in order for that to be counted in time. And I can almost guarantee that no postal worker is working past 5:00 PM. So that postal mailbox is not going to be collected. That's why I just try to consistently advertise, please use a ballot drop box.
So the ballot drop box at eight o'clock at closing time, and I'm standing in line and I want to drop another ballot in there and it's after eight o'clock, what hap, I'm not standing in line, I just charge up to it, it's 8:02.
Nope.
Take it from there?
Yes, we actually have election workers that are paired up with what we call Ballot Box Buddy, a Republican and Democratic observer. They leave at the same time after they have synced their cell phones, so that they know, uh, the time is synced to a cellphone tower. They all watch at the exact time and make sure it closes at exactly 8:00 PM. This happens every election, there will always be somebody that's running up to the ballot box after timelines. And even my own family are, have been guilty of this in the past, and they made the comment to me, really? I was only five minutes late. Well, where do you stop? You, it's 8:00 PM is in statute, we close at exactly 8:00 PM, no exceptions, unless there's a line. Think of it as, uh, similar to being in the bank line. They may close at five, but they're going to help everybody that's legitimately in line at 5:00 PM. That's how the ballot box works.
Yeah, and I, I would add the shame on people that, they've had the ballot in their hands for how long?
Eighteen-day voting period, and we tried to mail our ballots prior to that eighteen-day starting point every election, at least by a day or two.
Thank you. Any other comments before we close? Thank you, everybody, anything else, Dennis?
No, we're good, good discussions, thank you.
This meeting is now closed.
You have come to see the tools. This is Terry, he is a new organization.
Hi Terry, nice to meet you.
Yes. And Dennis is one of us, he was the president of the, uh, teaching, teachers.
Lobby of education.
He almost knows more about my union than I do. We would like to see if we could make an appointment with you to.
Oh, sure.
Talk.
Yeah.
If you and I, yeah, we'll get together for a philosophical discussion later on. Excellent, I, I, I really, I'm, I'm, I'm. You know, I was, I was thinking change, it's just a true story. I want to put on a junior college, that's what I'm saying, I'm true.
So, yeah. I, uh, have a meeting. To what extent do I mean, I walking into the lion's den?
Yeah.
But they're, they're a pretty friendly group. And like the discussion is, it's about how can we make businesses successful? They can't do it without employees, so we are supposed to work together.
You know, I have the same thing, I have to, you be in the line.
Um, are you talking, are you, are you wanting lunchtime or coffee or?
Right now, yeah.
Okay, um, I, I am most open, uh, Thursdays right now. So if you, if you call in and have, put it on my calendar.
Yeah.
Time and, and date. Okay, they'll know if I've already got a conflict or not, cuz every, every once in a while I'll have something, but yeah, that, that'll work, we gotta do that.
Good.
All righty. Good night, sweet shit.
Good to see you again. For drinks. Thank you.
I'm Kelly Dombrowski, the clerk of the board, and I'm gonna be doing the bid openings for the Camelot Reservoir Roof Replacement Project. And we have received four bids that I will be opening. Oops, sorry, this is not a bid. So this is three bids that we will be opening. This bid is from Stellar Corporation. And the total amount is $483,752.50. The next bid. This is from Late Ako LLC. Total amount is $308,717.64. And the last bid. This bid is from State Line LLC, total amount is $330,191.40. The original bids will be submitted to the Public Works Department for sufficiency and responsiveness. Thank you.